Okay, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, July 24th. It's being held here at the Select Board Conference Room in hybrid format. Uh, this meeting's being recorded. Um, if anyone else is recording the meeting, that's great. Just let Diane know because Jason's not here.
I'm not here.
Or you can let you know, but you're in an undisclosed location at the moment. So why don't we start off with the Pledge of Allegiance? Chief Stefanoits, would you please lead us?
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Constitution, to the Constitution, to God, to the Constitution, and to Jesus Christ.
Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we start with public comments? Is there anyone in the, in the room would like to speak under public comments? If you don't have to stand, you could just state your name and address, or you may, if you want.
Sure, sure. The owl can hear me.
Yeah.
It's visible. Marissa Cook Obergonen, 126 South Loomis Street. Um, I'm making this as a public comment this evening, as I've done with all the other boards and commissions that I've visited so far, because I don't want to cold email or cold call the board or secretaries about this. It's regarding a draft protocol that I'm developing for right of first refusal regarding Chapter 61. I've developed the draft and I've been going around the boards that have um, a stake in it, that have some say in it, and your board is one of them. So um, it's come to that time where I'd like to begin a dialogue with the Select Board and see how we can refine this process and get your feedback. Um, so I just wanted to, to make a public comment about that and let you know that I will be sending via email a draft protocol um, that I've developed so far and hopefully get the board's eyes on it. And then um, would like to request an agenda um, point for some later meeting date in the future, so that it may be discussed um, during one of your meetings. So I just wanted to, to put that out there and um, let you know that I'll be sending that and just verify who's the best person to send that to, so that the protocol can be reviewed by everybody and everyone can have access to it.
I would send it to Robin.
Robin, okay.
And Lisa.
Robin and Lisa. Okay.
Yep, and then she'll make sure that we get it and then we can review it and we can certainly schedule a future appointment. That'd be great to do.
Yeah, we can go some there. Okay, I will do that. Very good. Thank you very much.
I think you've hit all the relative boards and commissions at least twice. So that's feedback from them all. So it's pretty comprehensive at this point.
Exactly, exactly. At this point that I'd like to share with your board and because it's kind of collated now, it's organized. It should be readable for you guys. Okay. Thank you.
When do we need to have this done by?
Um, there's no deadline on it. It's more at our discretion. It's to kind of just fall in line with.
That was my attempt at humor. I failed badly. Was that October-ish?
Oh, well, before Thanksgiving, we were saying, yeah. Probably September.
Thank you. I'll be here all week.
There's a prospect that comes up, okay?
Oh, you know, I'm just like, oh.
Anyone else?
You can wrap that in a shower gift wrap, you know.
That's right. Protocol. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? I see Joanne.
Hi, Joanne LeBlanc.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Joanne LeBlanc, 38 Reservoir Road. I'm just curious, isn't there a problem with the owl? Because I'm not seeing the board, the room. I'm just seeing individual people that are on Zoom.
Oh, you know what? You got a click start video down there.
I do.
I'll try it again. Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome. Thank you. Perfect.
Anything else? For you, Joanne?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Excellent. I'm getting off easy tonight. Anyone, anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll move into our agenda. All right, on time. 6:05 PM. Emergency Management Director interview. Russ Anderson.
It's the right shirt.
Find out in a second.
Yep.
We already had that.
Already moved them all around.
He knew to ask. How'd that happen?
Been here a couple of times. Usually during budget time.
That was no accident.
No.
Don't tell the new chief that trick, though.
Okay, I won't. Hope we get between them.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it. By the way, as an aside, totally off topic. It's my understanding, if my memory serves correct, five years almost to the day since Rich Stefano was joining Southwick Fire Department.
It is. Five years in one day.
Yep.
Is it? Wow. Time flies, doesn't it? Felt like about a year, too, right?
Well, I'm here. I'm very thick.
That's right. It's either five or 30. The jury's still out.
You got it. You're doing good.
You want to tell us a little bit about yourself to start off?
How long you got?
Tell us something we don't know.
The next one's at 6:15.
So um, when, you know, Charlie retiring has brought some interest to me, you know, still a little bit of fire in the belly. No pun intended. Um, so when I was in Gambia as chief for 12, 10 years, I was the Assistant um, Emergency Manager in that position as well. Um, and Rich can attest that it was kind of emergency management light and that it was myself and the police chief that pretty much um, managed the functions. And of course, that was the um, October snowstorm that was so, uh, everybody remembers. Uh, learned a lot during that process. Um, learned on, you know, how, how to be prepared, how, what, what things we weren't prepared for, really. Um, they really caught a lot of people by surprise. And I've also seen it from the other side. Well, when these types of events happen, you know, I, while I've been focused on the emergency side of it and the response and, and staffing of that, there's also an important, important um, part of that that's recovered and, and getting the town back up and running and helping feed heat, do all those things that we learned that we had to learn how to do. Um, so when this position opened, I would, I found it interesting and thought I would apply. And I think you've seen my six years here that I, I can restructure things and, and bring, bring things to fruition. Um, and I would like to take those skills and try to bring them to the emergency management side. Charlie's done a great job and his, his staff, so there's not a lot of heavy lifting there. But there might be a need to refocus on where our priorities go in the, just from past experience.
We go around the room, like in order with questions or thoughts or? And Jason is here as well on Zoom, so I'm going to make sure that I don't mess this up and make sure we get everybody.
Um, honestly, I don't have any questions really for you because I know your history here. I've read your full resume. I know what you did in other towns. Um, you know, I'm, I know you're open to learning what you need to, to do the job. Um, I guess I, the only question would be what, you know, what major challenges that you see in this for yourself?
Well, I think one of the challenges would be developing a staff. I know Charlie's wrestled with that in the past and any, you know, whether it's the volunteer firefighters, the, you know, civic clubs, whatever, um, everyone's having challenges getting people to get involved. Uh, I think that would be the biggest because, you know, one or two person emergency management's not a team and not going to be able to help for long range events. Um, and typically they are a longer range, multiple days type things like that until we recover. So I think there's a lot of assets that could be provided in, in, under that, under the umbrella. Um, and trying to build those teams, if you would, would be probably the biggest challenge.
Mr. Peron?
I am having some sort of audio difficulties where it's breaking up a little bit, but I've heard, I mean, Mr. Anderson's credentials speak for themselves. It, I don't have any actual questions. I'm just here to make what is probably going to end up being a very difficult decision.
What do you, what would you think would be a? Would be your contribution or changes would you expect to make in the first six months to a year in this role?
I think process would be the, seeing, listening, looking, seeing what we've got. Is there a more efficient way to do things? Um, trying to bring both fire and police together for, for some of the events and, you know, drilling to, you know, we've all seen, you know, those snowstorms or those microbursts that hit and all of a sudden the roads are down, the wires are down and both agencies instantly are tapped out. Um, if there's a way emergency management can help in that and processing those emergencies, we now have the, the regional dispatch, so that's another element. Um, from being on that side, I think, and then looking and seeing how the other side, if you want to call them sides, operates, I think I could bring skills to that set to help improve the process, improve everybody working together for the, for the town, benefit of the town. You're good.
Jason, you still having trouble hearing us?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's my computer speaker system. It's very, it's very raspy. I can pick up some stuff, but um.
It helps if you put earbuds on FYI, if you've got them.
No, your, your phones, um, I do have, I don't know if this thing had Bluetooth capability on it. What I, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna log myself out and try and log back in and see if that helps. I can really hear anything that enough to really understand what's going on right now. I can make stuff out, but not it well enough. I'm going to call my.
And if anyone else is having, is anyone else on, on this call having trouble with the audio?
I'm not. It's good.
Fantastic. Well, we'll.
You want me to wait for him?
No, go right ahead.
My last question, sorry. Um, have you participated in any of the drills that they have had?
Yes. Yeah, actually, um, Carl had me bring in one of them. We had, I think Randy was involved that we had at the transfer station and we, we set that one up. We brought in a, it was actually a chief from out in the Cape that did those. We also had brought in a couple of other people, other chiefs that I've worked with to provide other education and, and things along those lines. And so, um, yes, would be the simple answer. A question for you. What do you expect out of emergency management?
That's a good question. I, I think from where I sit, I think we're blessed that we have such a strong group today. I'd like, and you, and you alluded to it, I'd like to see a little bit more integration and coordination and to make sure that it's a two-way street and that emergency management is included around discussions around major events that are happening, either planned or unplanned, you know? Whether it be the motocross event or even the, the, you know, the um, Ironman thing or some other large event that's happening in town that, that emergency management is included in the discussion and planning process for those events. And then I got to see, I, I was, I was lucky. I got to see a little of the reverse of it where we kind of needed emergency management in that last snow ice storm event where we had, where we had, like you said, 10 minutes in, we were all tapped out. Fire was flat out going around literally pulling trees out of the road. Cops are pulling trees out of the road. Communications with dispatch were, you know, tricky at best, so we, we actually used um, emergency management stepped up. Gee, I know Fire Chief Stefanoits was there as well to aid in communications between our public safety and um, and the PSAP, which I think took a lot of pressure off of everybody. I'd like to see much more of that coordination um, and to understand that everyone has a role to play and, and make sure that we're doing a good job by everybody um, without stepping on toes and, but, but coordinating each person's talents or each group's talents to what they can bring to the table. And I think that's a thing that we, we could always, and, and that doesn't just go for emergency management and police and fire. That's what, what every department in town too, right? And a lot of other places too. But um, I think that that's one area I'd like to see some work done. I mean, some of the things that emergency management capability that they have um, is phenomenal. And we got to watch the uh, the 24-hour exercise that they do every year. Just incredible, incredible communication skills, but they have other assets that, that can be brought to the table to help um, with stuff like that. So I, that's from my, from where I sit, that's what I'd like to see.
I think continuity of the team that is in place is important. It seems that was a team and, you know, they all knew each other, have worked with each other for quite a while and wouldn't want to lose that.
I agree. That's, that's legacy education is there.
Yeah, that's critical.
He's kind of back.
Well, he's on mute.
Is he on vacation?
I believe so.
I'm in Mr. Moglen's home state at the moment.
I'm sorry.
My former home state. Correct. Yes, your former.
Can you hear us now, Jason?
I can't. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I gotta figure this. I'm a Zoom ding dong.
You were looking at your feet.
Careful here.
Yeah, wait a minute. This is a family-friendly show. Okay, I'll get there. Hold on. I'm, uh, where's the darn camera? Continue while I just mess around with this.
Do you have any questions for candidate Anderson?
Uh, right now I don't. Uh, you know, Mr. Uh, Anderson's resume and body of work uh, is known to all and um, I'm good right at the moment.
Well, then we're right about on time. Do you have any other questions for us?
I do not.
We're good to continue on?
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you very much for your interest. 6:15, Emergency Management Director interview, Ian White. Hello, Ian, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, thank you.
Do you know everybody here? By the way, I forgot to introduce everybody when the meeting started, so.
I'm not much of a, my name is Ian White.
Okay.
Anyone who doesn't know me.
So just for the record, Doug Moglen, Jason Peron is with us on Zoom. Uh, he was with us on Zoom and Diane Gale's here. Uh, Assistant CAO Nadine Signoni, Administrative Assistant Robin Solak, um, are all on the meeting tonight. So how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, will you?
I will.
Excellent.
I grew up in southwest London in England. Um, I had a 35-year career in IT specializing in working with insurance companies. During that period of time, I was, started off as a programmer, a developer, a system engineer. And then I became very much into management. I had teams of people working for me. When I moved to the US, I had a team of five people. Uh, I ran the North American Technical Support Division for a software company, people in Canada and the US. I'm very used to dealing with budgets, project plans, uh, tracking expenses against uh, budgets. Well, I know the town has uh, probably likely to cut some budgets next year, so uh, hopefully I can find creative ways, if appointed, to uh, make our money go further. I'd be uh, very keen to look to grants from uh, the federal government or from mass emergency management. Um, I had my own business for 12 years. Um, my wife and I started that in 2006. We specialized in doing consulting work for IT systems with insurance companies. Uh, we worked all around the world. Um, did a lot of work in Bermuda for reinsurers. Um, did work in Australia, did work in Zurich in Switzerland, so a lot of international work. Um, we closed our business in 2018 and retired. Um, fortunately, we were fairly successful, so we could afford to retire early. I'm currently 62, by the way. Um, I had a great desire for public service. Um, shall I stop?
No, it's not. I didn't close it, did I? No, Joanne's still there. I was trying.
Go back, click on that one. Hang on, folks. Yeah, click on that. Oh, boy.
No, no, what happened?
Click on the Zoom? No.
What happened?
I'm still show everybody and we can still see everybody. Once again, we're having some technical issues. Uh, Lieutenant Banish, can you still hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine. Everything's nice and clear.
Okay, so we're going to do without the room here then. How's that?
No.
Don't do that.
I'm not doing that.
I'm not doing that.
Jason, can you still hear us okay?
I was just trying to look at the chat.
He's gone.
Why? Right.
Yeah. No.
I don't want to ride video.
Oh, what's that one to the right? Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, Ian.
Should not try to go to chat ever again.
I'm right. I, I, I have a desire. Um, seeing as I was successful in business, I have a desire to give back to the community, public service. I've been a member of the emergency management team for three years. Um, prior to moving to Southwick, I was a member of a radio club in Bristol in Connecticut and uh, did a certain amount of public service with them, things like helping to marshal parades and providing uh, communication and uh, they also had a cert team. Um, I'm very interested in amateur radio as a hobby, but it's also very handy for emergency communications. Uh, you came to our drill and I, Jason came last year, so you know that uh, what kind of things we do. Um, we have excellent systems in place for um, regional dispatch and the police and fire have all their radio systems, but we provide an extra layer of cover, both with the EOC and also the fact that all six members of emergency management are licensed radio operators. So we can, we often communicate amongst ourselves in the town and get on the radio and chat. Um, I've tried to focus very much on education when I uh, joined the team, so I've done a lot of incident management and other EOC-type courses. Um, the federal government has uh, a hierarchy of incident management courses for uh, command and control, which go from ICS 100 up to 400. 400 is the highest level qualification. I, I have all four qualifications. Um, I did uh, training in the MEMAs facility in Agawamp for that. Um, recent training has included things like uh, the, the people that run the gas pipeline in uh, in the town, Kinder Morgan Tennessee Gas. We do training with them every year, um, pipeline safety. Um, we recently did uh, a uh, a training session with the Springfield Water Company about dam safety and things like, you know, looking at floodplains in the town and that, which the town isn't really terribly at risk from flooding, but there are certain pockets of it, so it's useful training. Um, funnily enough, tomorrow, two of us are going to the Maritime Academy in Cape Cod to do uh, there's an annual hurricane symposium run by the National Weather Service. Um, we were talking, talking earlier, the chief was talking about recruitment and I, I think that's very important. Uh, the six members we have on the team, I am the second youngest, so I think, you know, we do need to think to the future for recruitment. Um, I know it's challenging, you know, public service isn't maybe as popular as it was in days gone by, but I'd like to do that. Also very keen to, you know, uh, have a bit of a spring clean and a refresh of the EOC. I think in the radio room, we've got a lot of clutter and things like that, obsolete equipment we need to modernize. Um, really, I'm looking to uh, to serve the town and do the best I can. Um, and do you mind if I stop talking now?
No, not at all. You've done a great job. Done a great job. And by the way, uh, Mr. Dunlap, did he make you take ICS 100 yet?
I, it's on my schedule.
He wouldn't let me show up to my first selectmen's meeting without having that. Just so you know.
It reminds me.
100 and 700.
Yeah.
I think I had to, yeah, I don't remember. It's been a while, but I know I did, I 100, like my second day after getting scored in. I've have to take a note, make sure Diane gets 100, 101 done.
It's on my schedule.
Yeah, it's 100.
Yes, I turned in my paperwork, right? So you kind of talked a little bit about it, but what other changes um, or contributions do you think that you would need, you would like to make in the first six months to a year in this position?
Well, I think the key thing that um, Chief Anderson mentioned is I, I feel that we've somewhat lost touch with the fire and the police department. I would like to reestablish relations. I'd like, I'm hoping that we could help them. I, I, I want a collaborative relationship. Um, I'm a pretty easy guy to get on with and I, I, you know, I would really like to help them. I mean, we, we, we have a good reputation in Southwick for uh, um, our emergency management team. It's well thought of. Uh, we were the first storm-ready community in Massachusetts and I, you know, I really want to try and uh, help as much as I can, even if that just means filling sandbags.
You were involved in the spring storms we had?
Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't. When you're talking about March 12th, I believe, yes, I, I had COVID. I was, I was very annoyed and upset, but I wanted to come down to the EOC that Charlie and Chief Stefanoits took care of.
Thank you for not coming down to the EOC.
Yeah, well, I figured I'd probably kill someone if I did, so I didn't want to do that. Um, but as you heard, Chief Stefanoits and Charlie did the dispatching and everyone.
So have you been in the midst of any crisis management? Um, in person?
Not much. We, we, you know, I was, I worked on a uh, cooling center last summer. Um, but no, most of it has been drills. I have been a regular attendee of the LEPC committee, but no, unfortunately, not really.
Or fortunately, depending on how you look at it.
Well, I would rather want to get my hands dirty so that, you know, I can say that I've got some experience, you know? That, that's key. That's, that's one thing that I am lacking, I've got to be honest.
How about in your career? Have you had any crises in your employment where you had to take charge?
Well, um, we had crises often with time scales and that, which usually in, involved us um, working extra hours and deploying extra resources in. Uh, I can remember one time in Bermuda, I worked for 19 days straight, 12 hours a day to, to recover a situation.
Okay.
Mr. Peron?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm going to defer to you, Mr. Moglen. Again, I'm still having, I switched over to my phone and I'm still having some breakup problems. So um, I can hear most of it, but it keeps skipping on me.
All right.
Must be the Jersey water.
Couldn't, it couldn't be that. Okay. Do you have any questions for us? Um,
I can't think of anything right now.
Okay, well then I thank you very much and I, we're going to carry this under old business. Given the audio, I don't know if we're going to get to make a decision tonight, but um, we're certainly going to discuss it and decide what our next step is going to be.
Right, thank you, Simon.
All righty, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. White and Mr. Anderson.
We got right back to schedule. Look at that. 6:30 exactly. Liquor license hearing to approve as corporate secretary, oh, Lord, Mr. Patel and transferring 40% stock to Mr. Patel. 208 Southwick Inc., DBA Millie's Country Store. Is that what this red folder is?
Yes.
Ah-ha. Okay, I need a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make the motion, open the hear, oh.
You can hear.
I'm going to defer to this, to Ms. Gale to make most of the motions this evening, if not all. And I will second the motion.
Perfect. Uh, Doug Moglen and I?
Diane Gale, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Okay, notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty of the Massachusetts General Laws that two oh eight Southwick D B A. Millie's Country Store. Is Mr. Patel on?
Uh, Mr. Patel is on, uh, good evening, boy. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for two oh eight Southwick. Can't seem to get my camera working here, but I'd be happy to give a brief.
I, I'm actually just looking for the pronunciation, so I don't make a disaster.
Rajesh Ba, Rajesh Bai Patel. Rajesh Bai.
Okay, and the other has spelled A N K I.
Yeah, Ankit Kumar.
Okay, change of stock, Antakumar G Patel is transferring forty percent of stock to Rajesh Kumar K Patel. At proposed premises at two oh eight College Highway, a one story building, end store in a mini strip mall, seven rooms, two entrances, three exits, total square feet, three thousand six hundred and seventy-four. The public hearing is to be held on Monday, July twenty-fourth at six thirty P M in the town hall. Auditorium, but there was a notice posted that it was moved to here, four fifty-four College Highway, Southwick, Mass. Interested parties should attend or submit written testimony. Uh, Chairman Doug Mogul, Vice Chairman Jason Peron, Clerk Diane Gale. Okay. Read any paperwork to be entered into the record. Do we have any such paperwork? There is no paperwork to be entered into the record. Uh, weird, weird mister. There was an attorney that wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Patel?
Yes, uh, thank you, boy. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the, it's, I'm the attorney for two oh eight Southwick Inc. Uh, before the board, this is an internal transfer of stock, uh, so they're bringing on a partner, uh, Rajesh, uh, Bai Patel, uh, who's also gonna come on as a corporate officer. Uh, there are no changes at all to the operation, the business, no changes to the manager. So essentially, uh, internal stock transfer, which requires A B C C in town approval.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the change of stock? Please state your name and address. Hearing none, that's in person or on Zoom? And ask for anyone to speak against the change of stock. Person to state name and address, anyone? Hearing none. Discussion from the board before we close the hearing?
None.
Jason?
I have none. None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I will second the motion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, uh, roll call vote, Doug Mogul and I?
Diane Gale, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Okay. Any further discussion? Then why we need a motion, uh, to grant the change of stock as, as read in the public notice?
I will make motion to change that stock as in the public notice.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul and I?
Diane Gale, I.
Jason Peron, I.
We need to sign anything in here? Okay, I think that does it for now. That was very straightforward.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, bye now.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, uh, pay some bills. Acknowledge payables warrant two four oh one B dated seven, twelve, twenty-three in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents. We're gonna acknowledge payroll warrant number two thousand, four hundred and two dated seven, eighteen, twenty-three in the amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred dollars and forty-nine cents. And I'd entertain a motion to accept the open session minutes dated seven eleven.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul and I?
Diane Gale, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Thank you. And do we have executive session minutes?
Meeting. Did you do them?
We'll table the executive session minutes till our next meeting.
Very good.
Okay, discussion items, action items, bills. Yada yada. First is a request from the Southwick Inn for a block party to be held on August fifth, twenty twenty-three from twelve P M to two o'clock A M and outside entertainment until ten o'clock P M. We have an application in front of us. This is something that they do every year. I'll make my customary declaration that some way how some of the owners of Wally Computer, which is my employer, are somehow involved in owning the Southwick Inn. If anybody objects to me sitting on this application, feel free and I'll be glad to step aside. Um, but this is an event, uh, I don't see anybody objecting.
No.
Um, but this is an event they have every year. Uh, they've been fortunate the last couple of years. It hasn't rained because the first five or six years they had it, it rained like a devil every time. So I hope they have great weather. Um, and I'd entertain a motion. Um. To grant this one day, so it, it, it goes outside their regular serving area, I think is what they, this comes down to, right? So they get a, a one day liquor license for the unlike what's not under their licensed premise.
But they have to have all of these inspected and approved by these.
Oh, yeah, they have to do all that stuff beforehand. Oh, yeah.
So that's we approve it subject to the.
Correct, because or else if we weren't gonna approve it, there's no sense in going through all of this. So it's become that chicken and egg thing, but yes.
So I will make a motion to grant that subject to the approvals of the other departments.
I'll second the motion to grant the license.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul and I?
Diane Gale, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Mr. Brown. D P W Director Fiscal Year, twenty-four Road and Infrastructure Projects Review and set a tour. You wanna come up?
How you doing?
Fantastic. How are you?
So it was a fun meeting, right, to talk about where to spend some money?
Big money.
That's funny. So, uh, we have just shy of one point nine million dollars available. Um, one point five million was from town meeting appropriation. And three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars is available from chapter ninety. So funny thing about chapter ninety, that money has not yet been released, which is
ridiculous, isn't it?
This is my tenth year here and never been this long. Usually gets, comes available in, um, May, June timeframe. The state is taking applications though, so they, they're pretty confident money's available, uh, but we can apply for projects, but they, they, they will not allow for reimbursement at this time. We just, I, we have time, so I think that's okay. Um, what I did not include in here, which I think there's also more money available, and I need to sit down with Laura Fletcher, is every year, last few years, we've had these same allocations or similar allocations. And we don't spend all that money in F Y twenty-two, F Y twenty-three. There's a, usually balance at the end of the year. And, uh, I think there's about two hundred thousand dollars available from prior years that has not yet been allocated. Uh, this was, when, when I put these numbers together, I try to be conservative. So I don't wanna overspend any projects, so there's money available when those projects get closed out. And we also don't allocate the full amount that's available for that year, so, um, always keep a little bit of balance just in case. So I wanna sit down with Laura Fletcher and just have a discussion with her, but my calculations are about two hundred thousand dollars available on top of the numbers that are, that are shown here. So that said, there's, um, plenty of places that we could spend the money. Um, we do have one project, Fred Jackson Road, that's the, the big nut on here, the big dollar amount. We started that last year with the drainage work and I'd really like to get that done this year. We have things lined up with some vendors that are willing to do that, uh, if the money's available. So I know we usually go on a tour and visit roads, but I would kindly ask if we could allocate that money tonight. Um, so I can get that product lined up and, and out the door and done this year.
So that one point three, is that all twenty-four money?
That's new.
Or was there some money allocated to it from last?
We had six hundred thousand dollars last year we probably, we put aside and that was for drainage only. Um, Fred Jackson Road is about, just under two mile long road. And, uh, it needed all new drainage, all new roads, road base. It's one of those, you know, million dollar per mile projects that we have in town. So I know that's a big nut, um, and takes away with other, other projects you may have in mind, uh, but, uh, I think that really needs to get done in my mind.
And what are the, and the other projects here coming up from?
So the other one, we have a pavement manager program, which we try to follow. I try to follow, uh, we're making these recommendations. Um. The paving and drainage projects, one, the numbers one through nine. Those are products that require some level of drainage plus a, a surface work as well. Um. The surface treatments, if you're familiar with the microseals, crack seals, um, cape seals, we've done many of those products over the past few years. I really like the crack seal projects. We can get a lot of roads done, uh, with little dollars. I do like to spread these products around town. Um, now we're focusing, you know, any one year, any one area. But it's nice where we can show um, work being done throughout towns. Everybody or most, most residents can at least see some, some of the work that, um, we've done. So crack seals is, is good at that because we can do a lot of roads with, you know, little, little short dollars.
I have a strange question. Do we use the same materials and processes as say like Montana, Wyoming, Alaska? That survived the winter as well?
I think so. It's a good question. Uh, so we, we follow, you know, mass D O T has standard specifications and they're all designed to, to, to adapt or to, to be, um, to work in our climate. So everything we spec is, is, is a mass D O T spec. I don't know what they use in Montana or Alaska, but, uh, I can tell you that the quality of the products and not just, this is just, yeah, this is industry wide, the quality of products has gone down over the years, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, you could build a new road and it would last twenty, thirty years. Teddy, you build a road with, you know, pavement materials that you buy at an idiot asphalt point and you're gonna get fifteen, twenty years out of it. That's just the reality. Um.
Seems incredible with all the improvements in materials, technology and material science.
Yeah.
That the Roman streets are better than the ones we put in now, right? But.
I, I always say, you know, the road is as good as, 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 just like your house, like your house is as good as its foundation, right? You want a good solid base and, uh, so. Yep. So, so when I do these projects, I, I always harp on doing drainage work as well, not just paving a road. We really need to get the drainage work done, get the water. Water is public enemy number one. We gotta get the water off the road and, uh, uh, into a system where it will not damage the road long term.
Um, on the, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's, I've interrupted you, I guess.
No, not at all. On Gargon. Is there a plan there to just rip out one sidewalk and just put one good sidewalk?
Yeah.
It's a disaster on both sides.
We have, we have talked about that and I, I would like to do that as well. Uh, I do have a number here for Gargon Terrace, but that's a full replacement of one side. We could certainly do what you're talking about. Um, ripping one side out, replacing it with lowland seed and calling at least that one half done. We did do some tree, we removed two trees that were in the, in the, in the sidewalk belt this past month or two.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that was a, in my mind, that was a first step to, uh, replacing that, you know, removing a sidewalk.
Remove it. They would be on the other side then where you replace it.
Yeah, there were one trees on both sides, one on each side, but if you're driving on Gargas, I would remove the one on the right hand side, which is the south side of the road.
Fair enough. I've just seen, I've talked to some folks on that road and, uh, been on that road and the whole road's the horror show. If we ever gonna do the whole thing and then take out a sidewalk and put sidewalks on one side, there's no need to have sidewalks on both sides, in my opinion. Right? Most, most of our residential neighborhoods now, new construction, we would do sidewalks on one side.
Yep.
It's a dead end street and, um, but the road itself is in desperate need of repair, amongst others that are in desperate need of repair as well.
I agree.
But if we commit. Jason, I didn't forget about you. If we commit.
No, I'm just sitting here quietly.
If we, you know, if we commit one point three out of one point eight, uh, let's call it two point oh, because we're hoping there's two hundred thousand there from previous years. That's not gonna leave a lot of room for a lot of other projects. So I still think we should do our little tour. I think it'd be good experience and, um, I, I would do my own little tour every, every couple of weeks, but it would be good to ride around and kind of take a look at some of what we've done and what, what, you know, up, you know, outlying years, what, what's gonna be coming up, because some of these are on here year after year that need to get done and you know, we need to start getting to some of them and there's some that, that come up that never quite make it up onto this list that we're gonna have to really start you know, looking at the pavement management side of things to see where they, they show up or if they're gonna be part of a larger project, you know, I know the, uh, Fernwood, Birchwood, that was all part of the sewer project. That would have put them right in prime space to get repaved and redone. But, uh, the residents over there and town meeting, uh, flushed the whole project, no pun intended, six hundred grand of design work that was allocated at the previous town meeting was then uh, tossed. So it was really unfortunate.
I assume two through, I'm sorry, I assume two through nine have been on here prior years.
I believe.
Sure, yes. And, um, I mean, and there's a few more that I, you know, I've brought up a few times, you know. But, but the, you know, the, the nice thing about the pavement management thing is, is that it takes some of the politics out of it in that you, you look at the age, it, it kind of ages the, uh, the roads, shows you the condition of the roads and then it bubbles this up, so it doesn't really matter. Um. It takes the politics out, you know what I mean? People can call and say, well, you should do my road first or you should do this road first, but they're, when they're, they're all equally bad, the pavement management, uh, starts to take a look at it. But every now and then you do get ones that are, you know, that are outliers that need to be looked at. Um. Uh, what was the other, the other one that I brought up a few times that, uh, Woodside Circle? That, that's original to that neighborhood. Gargon's original to the neighborhood. That whole Fernwood, Birchwood area is original to that neighborhood. Um, and then the other thing I'm glad to see and, and you mentioned it, Randy, is to do those surface treatments for the newer roads, relatively newer, say in the last thirty years. To just try to protect them to get a few more years or, or even earlier in life like we did at, um, Lexington. Right? To get something down on those roads to protect them before they, what they call alligator. And then once that happens, you're all done, right? You're gonna have to dig it up, so it's a good investment to protect that, that asset. Jason?
Yes.
What do you think?
You know, I, I think going around is, is a good idea. Like you sweet, you know, I had my first experience with it last year. It was a good eye opener. It also gets you out to a few streets that, you know, you may not see or, or I, I, in some cases, I'd never actually even been on uh, the development too far in behind the ranch and stuff like that. I know that's a little different animal. Um, but you know, there's, we need to take a look. I, I spoke with Randy the other day. Randy, I, I never asked, is there, with, with the micro sealing and the other options, is there like for a, a street like Gargon without, uh, too many structures, is there any possibility to like grind in place and, and, and grind compact and do some sort of overlay?
Yeah, there is. I, I would look at the road and I'd, I'd actually wanna see what kind of road base there is in Gargon Terrace. One of the lucky things we have in town is that side of town is uh, pretty well draining, uh, sandy material, which does help from a road standpoint. And it's probably one of the reasons why some of those roads that have, have, uh, been held out fairly well over the years. Um. But I, I certainly I would try to, when you look at a road, you, you, you try to give it a number, a rating, a zero to one hundred rating. A hundred is a brand new road, uh, and zero is a road that's, you know, completely deteriorated. And depending on where your number lies on that road is what they would recommend for repair. So surface treatments uh, like microseals and crack seals, uh, and, uh, cape seals. You would want a road that's still in pretty good condition, you know, eighty, maybe seventy-five plus for a road rating. Um, a road like Gargon Terrace in my mind's probably a lower than that and not a good candidate for a micro seal or a cape seal. But, uh, there may be some other methods we could use. Um, we have employed a process called cold and place over the past few years where you, you grind up the existing road base. And, uh, you use that as a new road base and then you pave on top of that. Um, that's actually very successful, successful in my mind, and you're reusing products that are, are in place and not, you know, disposing of the old and purchasing new. So I think there are some savings by using that type of product and, uh, we've done a lot of those over the years and we continue, expect to continue doing that moving forward.
More mining, that way, right?
More mining hillside, tannery, um.
And those are heavier, heavier and. Heavier and quicker traffic on those. That's why I was curious about a street like Gargon or Woodside that's. Got a low traffic volume but is in really rough shape, if it's something we could do, because I know it. As, you know, in Westfield, they did it on Union Street and they did it a little bit different though, I believe. I think it was Shaker. That they did that and that's a relatively obviously travel, well-traveled road and it's held up pretty good, you know, I just wanna. You know, we're, we're stuck in this horrible spot with the chapter ninety the way it is and. I did reach out to the Director of Rural Affairs, Ms. Goby, and there's gonna be a plan to have her out here. And then hopefully in September. And uh, I, you know, hopefully we can bend her here a little bit with Mr. Baldiga and um Senator Marks. And, you know, I know it's a, from what I've been told in, in my first year and whatnot. It's a very difficult process to try and get this whole. Ratio formula straightened out and it may, it'll never get straightened out to the ratio it needs just because we're Western Mass. But I'm hoping, you know, to minimize the cost for everybody and utilize any. Other sort of treatments or procedures we can use, you know, so I'm glad to hear that, because I know I'd spoke to you about the old fashioned. Oil and uh. Milling, or not milling, but yeah. Trap rock there and, you know, that's not really, I know they use it in smaller towns, but it, it wouldn't really work out here, so. I just uh, you know, that's my biggest concern is trying to get the biggest bang for a buck and. See what we can do.
So are we scheduling a date to drive around?
I think we should and I think we, if um. We should discuss Randy's request. Tonight under Old Business to see if we want to allocate. You know, Randy seems pretty adamant about the Fred Jackson piece. And a project that we were committed to last year anyway, at least six hundred grand of it last year. Um, would kind of make sense to, to finish it, but let's come back to that under Old Business tonight. Somebody make sure that I actually don't forget that before we're meeting closes, because I'm good at that. But um, and then we can schedule that, the rest of the tour for sooner than later. Next couple, when are you uh?
Back in the common room? I am back in Saturday, on Saturday and I will be around for the, the majority of August, at the very, the last full week of August, I'll be gone. So the majority of August, I'll make anything work right now, pretty much. Over the next, from the thirty-first down to the twenty twentieth?
I'm trying with anything.
I am on vacation next week. The week of the thirty-first to the fourth. The following week is open for me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, the week of the sixth, the thirteenth, the week of the twentieth, I will be in um Nevada again. Uh, that'll, that works for me.
Work for you, Mr. Brown?
Yes, that's perfect.
Eight AM?
Yep.
Here?
Sure.
We'll meet here?
Yeah. Nope. Okay. And then we can reconcile the rest of it.
Thank you.
Awesome. Do you have any other stuff in front of us tonight, sir?
I don't think so, but I'll second your own.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next, approved Old Cemetery Tree Removal Project Award for Regal Tree and Shub. Shrub Experts for fifty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And this is requested by. Uh, the Cemetery Commission, correct? And this was a CPC project as well. Not mistaken, and they did have a bid opening and. Uh, Regal Tree and Shrub was. Uh, significantly the lowest bidder and the Cemetery Commission is. Um, asking for the Select Board to award this bid as presented.
They will make a motion to, to accept that awarded. Bid to, to award that bid.
Second the motion to uh award the bid to Regal Tree for the tree removal project.
Doug Mogan, aye?
Dan Gill, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we got a few PVPC invoices. So the first one is invoice number ten. Um, in the amount of six thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
I have a problem with these, if you can explain this or help me understand this.
I'll do my level best.
We have two number tens. The documentation behind them is the same, except for one of them has an additional professional fee charge of seven fifty. Dates are all the same. Labor's all the same, so I'm thinking it's a duplicate, it's an updated. Number ten, not.
I saw a note about this, actually.
I don't know, that was, that was how it was presented, because he sends them to me by email. But I noticed it too. There's two different dates on them. I think one is just updated.
And this one stated the fourteenth and one stated eighteen, good catch, so why don't we go with?
Is. Now, then, then my other question is, do they add a professional services fee every? Month, every?
I believe it's.
Every what? Every year? If we add the same, hit you on twenty-four, there's two twenty fours. Again, a seven fifty. Charge, this is different.
Why don't we table these? I'd entertain a motion for. See, let's do it this way. I'd entertain a motion for the clerk to sign. Once we get an adequate ac- application on these, uh, these two, I believe we have two invoices in front of us, not really four, so. I'll leave it for when Carl gets back to explain it and then. You can execute those on behalf of the board.
Fine.
Jason, you wanna make that motion?
I will make the motion to have the clerk responsible for signing for these community grants once explained in full.
I'll second the motion. Doug Mogan, aye?
Jason Peron, aye?
Dan Gill.
Perfect. Cool, we just took care of half the agenda too. Approved Southwick Fire Department, twenty-ten Ford Explorer surplus and authorized sale. We have a letter from the fire chief. Uh, car two, two, twenty-ten Ford Explorer. Which has been the chief's car, transport vehicle and uh, and recently as an EMS fly car. Has a failed transmission with a repair cost exceeding two thousand dollars. Given the age and the mileage and the fact that it was part of the planned fleet reduction. Though the transmission has moved up that date a little bit. I'm requesting that we surplus the vehicle where is as is, probably because it doesn't move. The current Kelly Book value is thirty-five hundred to four thousand, but that does not account for the transmission. Uh, so I'd entertain a motion to surplus this vehicle and then have the C A O. Um, put it with other equipment, excess and obsolete equipment that is usually sold at auction.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Doug Mogan, aye?
Jason Peron, aye?
Did I say that? Dan Gill, aye? Did I say that?
No.
I did, Dan Gill, aye? I, aye.
And uh, Senior Center, this is a heads up, Senior Center Annual Fall Welcome Back Breakfast and Meet and Greet is August thirty-first, eight-thirty to ten. Changing it this year to have breakfast and the meet and greet at the same time. And they've invited the library. Uh, usually fire department sets up a stove top demo, et cetera, et cetera. So that should be a good event and don't forget the senior sizzler coming up, August eighth. CPC Grant Agreement, a hundred and five thousand dollars with the Cemetery Commission for Tree Removal. So just kind of putting the cart before the horse, but um, we approve the, the tree part of it.
Yeah.
But here's the rest of it, uh, tree removal at the old cemetery. And just FYI, there's one grant agreement for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars with buildings and grounds. For bronze plaques at the Town Veterans Memorial and seventy thousand dollars for the building and the grounds for. Uh, the Southwick Police Department, uh, Police Department. Slate, roof and cupola rehabilitation. And two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars for park and rec for the Wally Park Spray Park. Uh, forty-five thousand dollars uh for housing fund for flooring replacement. Um, I believe that's at People, uh, People Square, that was called.
Yes.
And grant agreement, twenty-nine thousand and seventy-five dollars um for, for the Morehouse. And that's through the Historical Society, I believe. So those were all articles on the town meeting warrant that were voted on. Uh, this year, the CPC has. Taken it upon itself to kind of issue a contract, which is probably a good idea. Um, that kind of outlines the expectations of what each recipient of a grant award from CPC funds, which are taxpayer dollars. Um, being spent in the community. And assigns uh. A signatory and, and the select board for the ones that are for the town in itself are the signatory to those with. Um, a secondary signature for uh, the relevant department head. So for buildings and grounds, it was Mr. Sutton, I'm sure, who's on the one for the police department. I just say we make the lieutenant responsible for it. You can lay it out, we'll pay him back.
There you go.
So I. Yeah, so we can take, do we wanna take uh, one at a time?
Building and ground.
It's buildings and grounds for the police department too?
Yeah.
Okay. So you wanna take them one at a time?
Or.
Or you wanna make an omnibus motion for all of them?
I, I would make a motion to make an omnibus vote to accept them.
Okay, I would second the motion to do this as an omnibus vote.
Okay, Carl shaking his head, watching the video right now. He's not online. Uh, Doug Mogan, aye?
Dan Gill, aye.
Jason Peron, aye?
Yeah. We got, we filled it, there was a half a page right there, we just murdered it. I guess we can talk about this now. Not that it was a huge secret, but they'd asked us to wait, but it's under new business, right?
Yeah. Or we can. Oh, you wanna sign those right now?
Yeah, we'll get them at there. Okay, so this was a request. Um, as we are continuing down the path of becoming a designated green community. Um. We may wanna entertain the thought of having Pioneer Valley Planning Permission. Uh, take on a role to work with our staff to identify projects and determine. What if any PVPC administrative support role may come into play? Um. We've done all, we've met all the requirements of becoming a green community. We're basically just waiting on the final documentation and probably some. Um. Officials to come to town and make an award, so. Um. That's the topic. I guess we'll just leave that and carry that to the next meeting to kind of further. Ruminate and think about that uh, as to how we wanna proceed with that, whether we wanna do that ourselves or have the Regional Planning Agency. Um, take a role in helping us with administering the, the program itself.
Do you wanna motion to table it?
I don't think we have to table anything, because I don't think it's really been announced, so.
So we'll just.
I think it's just kind of a new business, kind of thinking about Pioneer Valley Planning for if and when we become a green community, which we've been working on for like three years.
We'll discuss it.
And it's all but inevitable, but we'll, we'll let the.
Okay.
Let the folks that need to make that announcement, make that announcement.
Yeah, okay.
Let's go through new business. Does anyone have any new business?
I do not.
Jason?
I do, I do have something I wanna bring up, um. I've been. I've been approached by a, a few people from Concom, um, as well as planning board regarding their several properties here in town. Uh, that are, have numerous unregistered vehicles, some of them commercial, uh, parked vehicles and, and. But impacted, possible impacted conservation areas, so I'm going to be going around and uh, looking at some of the other ones. And I'm gonna be putting together a request to uh. Get with Mr. Scott and uh, address some of these issues. I guess some of these are pretty long, out. Longstanding um, and problematic. Um, so that's been a concern of mine, there's. There's several that stick in mind, I don't wanna single anybody out right now, so um, that's more for us to, to work on. But that's something that's become a concern of mine.
Okay? Maybe?
And that's it for me and Star's new.
Thank you. Any new business?
None.
Um, I only have, I think only one new business, um, and it's. Kind of along those lines. I'd like to see the, uh, send a letter to the building inspector. Um, to step up enforcement. Uh, regarding overall signs. We just have had a mushroom, mushrooming of illegal temporary signs. And just these rando gutter cleaning mattresses, you name it. And plenty of this. You, you name it, right? But they're, they're just, they're showing up everywhere and once you. Um.
Condone it.
Once it starts, it, it doesn't seem to stop and I've also noticed a proliferation of late, of business signs in residential zones that are contrary to the sign bylaw. So I, I'd like to just send a letter on behalf of the Select Board. Um, to Kyle Scott to kind of just, you know, in his role as the zoning enforcement officer. To step up enforcement the same. You go to any corner, significant corner and there's. Ten to twelve signs at every corner and then at other random corners, there's the power washing guy, there's the. You name, and I'm picking on the power washing guy, because those are the ones that mushroomed late last week, there must have been a hundred of them through town. So.
Thank you, I've been noticing that and was gonna ask. How that is so rampant, thank you.
Uh. That's all I have for new business tonight. So, old business. Um, I'd like to suggest that we chop off the first one. I think we've beaten this topic to death. Um, North Pond violations, we've met with all the fishing game, we've met with D E P, we've met with Concom, everybody's got a plan of action. The police are out there about every day, several times a day, looking at what's going on. They've been very responsive when there's complaints. Um, there's some additional work to be done, but I think for the majority of the work that needed to be done. Either it's done or about to be done. So does anyone have any objection to taking that one off?
Nope.
None.
Thank you. Sewer System I M A, we're still waiting to hear from Westfield's attorney at this point. Um, Marijuana Dispensary, any update?
I actually have been approached by one or two individuals that are very interested in uh, moving forward. Um, I did speak with John Goddard, because as we know, we have to have another vote. Um, and have the planning board, the um, ordinance wording changed. Um, so I, I, I do wanna request that we uh, bring that up to the planning board to start working on that, because. If it's worth it, amongst other things, I would like to possibly look into getting this in front of the voters sooner rather than later. If it would be uh. Beneficial. To do so.
Thank you.
I spoke about it for the, you know, the, the financial bit, gains and benefits the town can seek from it. You know, I, I'd rather get those coming into the town. We're gonna need them.
That's, that's an issue right now, that's gonna be in front of your planning board, right? Because that's. That's where the change needs to happen, at least one of the two changes that needs to happen.
Yes, I'm gonna be. Yep.
Okay.
They've been, they were given a little bit of a preliminary notice that I spoke with John and uh, I'm gonna be pushing that a little bit. Well, not pushing it, but promoting that a little bit better in the near future, to get that rolling and just get that. So we can try and get that situation handled and move forward with. However, we're gonna be, the town's gonna move forward with it.
Okay. Um. Muni aggregation for electricity, any update this week?
No, we're still uh, standing by. Uh, we've uh, signed off with Beth Greenblatt. She's gonna be working with us on this and uh. Uh, I gotta have to get with her personally and we gotta go over the specifics and talk about the couple of different companies. And uh, set things up to get. We, we pretty much have colonial power groups. Uh, boilerplate and there is some legislation now that's been pushed into. I was reading about it the other day by a couple of senators or, or Senator Rep. I was reading about it the other day by a couple of senators or or Senator Rep out east to to expedite this process. For the exact same reason I just said that these, almost all of these. Uh, aggregation uh, plans are pretty much all boilerplate, they just changed names, dates. And companies and and fees, so there there is a a push to get this moving forward and. Uh, hopefully, you know, we can get to the point where within the next year, uh, at the most, we can get moving forward with this.
Great. Flag policy, second and final reading under revision?
Semi-final. It was to include, uh, the flags will be flown, guest flags will be flown for a maximum of thirty days, it's not on here. And it should also be on the form as well.
Okay, so you'll you'll send those changes back to Nadine and we'll get to this and hopefully finally finish this one off for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Great. Select Board Goals and Objectives, any updates this week?
Not for me.
Jason?
Not for me, sir, not not today.
Are we gonna let the dumpster thing roll till next month? No pun intended. Personally, I don't see it, but.
We we're not really doing anything for it, right?
Well, they wanted to institute a dumpster fee, we are the fire commission. Fire Commissioner to establish that fee.
Oh, we would do that.
We would establish, they they proposed to establish a new fee for a dumpster in a res- a residential dumpster, I still think um. I'll get with Carl, I think we really want to have a discussion around with the planner. And Board of Health, because everyone's got their.
Hands. Thought it was a planning board zoning thing.
And then they mentioned that there's dumpsters with in residential zones, and sure enough. Somebody sent me a picture of a house that has their own dumpster.
Yeah.
Who knew?
So do we need to bring it up to the planning board?
I think we need to have a meeting, just an internal meeting with Goddard and the Board of Health Agent and see what. And what they want to take back to their board draft, and I'll talk, I'd like to talk to Carl and bring that back for sometime in August. And we did send the Noble Steed Development Report to the planning board, I know they mentioned it in passing during their. Meeting last week. Um, but they had a very light agenda and a very purposeful meeting last week. Um, I'm assuming that they're gonna send a response back to us.
That actually, Mr. Mogul, Mr. Chairman, uh, I've been a unofficial liaison between. The developer and the the town, and he's moving forward finally, we've got some sidewalks going in. Uh, the safety concerns have been addressed at the moment, um, and uh, he's very open. To working with the town to avoid getting on, for lack of a better term, our bad side. So he's a, he's he's finally coming around and doing what he needs to do.
Okay. Uh. Fiscal Year Twenty Four Reappointments, Appointment to Boards, Com- Committees and Commissions. Uh, we had talked last meeting that we're going to close the applications out on the twenty eighth, I believe is a week from. This week. This Friday, and then we'll compile the list, distribute the list amongst us and the board chairs. And then start scheduling interviews for our meeting the week, starting the week of August seventh, because we're gonna have more than. And we may even have to throw in an extra meeting and or uh, whatever, because it's gonna be a lot of people. But um. That's where we're at with that, but I think we're coming along nicely in that space. Good? Jason?
That sounds great to me.
Okay. Uh, coming back, I did, you have a couple things, do you have anything?
Randy?
Yeah, I wrote it, I did write it down to make sure we got back to it, because I'm gonna forget, do you have any old business?
I don't.
Jason?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just have a few. Um, first, huge thank you. Once again to the Southwick Civic Fund for an incredible fireworks celebration on seven fifteen. And uh, I want to thank Cindy Sullivan. Um, and all the folks that came out and donated their time. To collect additional donations from folks coming into the fireworks that help offset the cost, I want to thank everyone that donated. Um. And 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 help make that event a success. Um, last week, we did have a public meetings and open meeting law seminar put on by Mass Municipal. And I know I went, I did you go to that one, I was definitely taking the video of it, it was definitely worth it. Um, and then we also had our public meeting for hazard mitigation plan update that Randy. Um, champion, I was glad to see that all three select board members were in attendance, um, and I think Deb Paraff from Lake Management. I was a little disappointed that there was very little public representation at a public meeting regarding hazard mitigation. Um, and planning for same, but um. And I want to thank Randy again also for inviting Representative Baldiga and myself. Uh, to the four H event uh, this past weekend at the Big E. Uh. Interesting, great time, it was great to see support for um. Agricultural endeavors and and what these kids are doing, and they were so proud of some of their animals and and what they're doing, and it's such an important part of what. Of our town and and this area, so really great to have a a good showing and um. Just very well represented, thank you. Um, we talked about applications, just another note that I noticed that this past weekend Bab's Beach was closed due to E coli. So with the other seventy or so beaches that were going, we were able to stay open right now, but the situation is, shall we say, fluid. We scheduled a tour of the roads, and then I mentioned the signs, so now we'll come back to. Does anyone have any appetite to vote on the one point three million dollars for um, Fred Jackson? And and move that project forward and then we'll schedule our tour of the roads for. Um. What would say, August eleventh?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I do want to make the motion to move that project forward, we did all the work with the drainage. Um, so you know, we, the longer we wait, you know, especially with the. Bizarre weather we've had this year all over the Northeast, we don't need to do all that work and have it all washed away. So I'd make a motion to uh. Allow Director Brown to start that project forward.
I'll second that. Get her done.
Okay, motion made and seconded, roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Great, so you got that one, and then we'll go for the rest and try to do the math.
Get creative.
Good news is, it's not gonna rain anymore because the roof at Town Hall is done, or at least weather tight, so the rain shall stop.
Are all the gutters on though?
Nah, details, details, that's just just feeding the swimming pool, the new swimming pool in the basement. And.
Starting rumors.
Dude, oh, we had one on July fourth, we absolutely had one, um. Emergency Management Director, do you want to carry this to our next meeting, do you want to discuss it tonight, do you want to vote on it tonight?
I want to carry this table and carry it to our next meeting because as I stated, I. You know, I I will listen to the recording so I could hear everything, I I could not make out enough to to really. Like I said, was going to be a difficult decision to make anyway, I want to have all the information that that was presented.
Fair enough. Okay, does anybody have anything else in front of the board tonight before we go into exec session? And my only advice for August seventh, pack a lunch. It's gonna be a long meeting, bring a snack. Okay.
I'll save my peppermint powder, so.
We are gonna go into executive session, uh, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, Two and Three, and Chapter Two Fourteen, Section One B. Liter- litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with police union coalition and fire. IAFF, DPW, Non-Union Staff and Clerk Union, UPSU, Executive Session Regarding Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One. Two and Three, Chapter Two Fourteen, Section One B and Exception Two. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene in open session. And the chair will declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and the chair move to go into executive session to discuss, to conduct. Strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And the chair declared an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the body and not reconvene in open session. And per Chapter Two Fourteen, Section One B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. And it's a roll call vote to move into executive session, Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.